All right, if I can ask you all to please rise for the invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Dr. Darren McClellan with Fairhope United Methodist Church. If I can ask you to please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, wise council members and Madam Mayor. It's good to be with you this evening. Let's pray. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for your love in the world. You called us to be good stewards of your creation, remind us that we live in a marvelous place which you have given us. For the wind, for the wave, for the wood, for the rebar, and for the block, we give you thanks for all of it, God. And for that which you've given us, Lord, might we give in return the best of ourselves, the best of our talents, the best of our abilities. Use them for your sake, for the good of your people in this community, we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic of which is sand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are you going to stick around, Darren? You're taking the Latin for punishment, aren't you? Council prior to the meeting, the clerk handed out a resolution that would be a resolution concerning the approval of the selection of Sawgrass Consulting for professional consulting services. Do you all have that? And I believe that the city attorney also wanted some language added, which say, subject to the approval of the city attorney, he would like to look at that contract before he approves it. So I would like to ask if we can amend the agenda to add that resolution as item 25, and the reason being that we really need to get our substation project on Morphe Avenue going, and this would facilitate that. Every day that we can move this ahead is money saved to pay for that concrete and steel and wood.
Can I make a motion to add this resolution to the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of amending the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, please say nay. All right, the agenda is amended. Thank you. Item two is a presentation from Lee Parks, the CPA with Warren Avery.
First, you need to approve the minutes. Number one, approve the minutes.
Oh, let's go on to number one then. Jump right past that then. All right. Do you have any changes, additions, or deletions to the minutes as submitted? Thank you, Lisa.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Now we'll get to a presentation by Warren Avery. Presenting the audit for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2020.
Thank you very much. Okay, each of y'all should have a handout that has a PDF copy of the slides we're about to go over, as well as some required communications and another letter that we're going to discuss. But first, we'd just like to start by just saying thank y'all very much for allowing us to come present with y'all and the opportunity to serve as external auditors. Just real quick about the engagement team. My name is Lee Parks, I'm the engagement member. We have Jennifer Williams out of our Atlanta office that serves as the single audit engagement leader. My colleague Rick Blanton works on the engagement as the senior manager. Scott Pruitt out of our Birmingham office, he handles the IT component. So there's different components that are involved in this engagement. And then Priya Perani is the associate, and then Jack Rau from our Pensacola office serves as the engagement quality control member. And what that is, any audit that comes out of our office has to go through an additional level of review, so that he serves as that. All right. And then we'll go through this fairly quickly, so if there's anything that I skim over, please let me know, we can drill down and address anything. The City Fairhope received a unmodified opinion for the September 30, 2020 audit, and that's generally referred to as a clean opinion. The report date was March 5th, 2021, and this excerpt right here comes from our audit report, and it's known as the opinion paragraph, and that can be found on page one of the financial statements, and it just communicates this unmodified opinion. We're going to just go over some, the balance sheet in a combined, it's going to include the governmental funds and the business-type activities together. So total assets for the city were $247 million, and that's roughly $30.7 million. Total liabilities were $62 million, and that was up approximately $15.5 million from the previous year. And net position totaled $185 million, or up approximately $15.3 million. And these next few slides are just going to go into the details of what made up those categories. Total cash at the end of the year was $61.6 million. This was up approximately $15.8 million. The main driver for that increase was the city issued the Series 2020 Utility Revenue Warrants on September 30, 2020, and for the purpose of refunding the 2011 Utility Revenue Warrants. That refunding did not take place until November, so the cash was sitting in a restricted escrow account at year-end. And you'll see that that has an increased impact on the debt as well. Total capital assets were $173.8 million. This was up approximately $11.8 million from the previous year. Major components of that were, there was about $4.7 million in land acquisitions in 2020, and approximately $9.6 million in utility infrastructure improvements. Accounts payable at year-end were roughly $5.9 million. This was up about $2.5 million from the previous year, and the reasoning for that was Hurricane Sally came, and there was a lot of expenditures related to cleanup at year-end that didn't get paid before year-end, so that's why that's an increase. Notes payable totaled $1.2 million at the end of the year. This is related to a $1.5 million note that the city used to purchase the K-1 Center from the Baldwin County Board of Education. It's a five-year note, $300,000 a year, so that's where you get the $1.2 million balance. Your direct placements, as really your general obligation bonds and warrants, they totaled roughly $23.8 million at the end of the year. That's up approximately $10.7 million, and the large factors that, why you had received, issued the new bonds, you had not refunded the old bonds yet, so that's why you have a significant increase in your long-term debt. In November of 2021, I'm sorry, November of 2020, that was paid off, so that would come back down. Some other components you'll see are the opay liability, and the net pension liability, and deferred outflows. Most of these are liabilities that are based on actuarial calculated for your other post-employment benefits, and then your net pension liability, so those tend to fluctuate each year. Your government-wide statement net position totaled $185 million. Thus broken down into three main components, one being net investment and capital assets, which was $159.4 million. Your second largest one is restricted. That totaled $15.4 million. $14.2 of that was restricted for debt service, and $1.2 million was restricted for road improvements, road maintenance and capital improvements. And then the remaining $10.3 million was in the unrestricted category. Now, on the revenue statement of activities, we're going to break out into different groups. So right now, we're just going to look at the governmental funds. So these are all the funds with the exception of the utility funds. As you can see, sales tax increased. It was roughly $9.9 million, an increase of about $660,000, and that was driven primarily by the increase in the simplified seller's use tax of $571,000 during the year. Intergovernmental revenue totaled $2.4 million. That's an increase of about $1.4 million, and that also is, the reason for that increase is the Hurricane Sally and the related FEMA income that was recorded during 2020. On the expense side, the general government totaled roughly $6 million, an increase of about $691,000 during the year, and that was because of two additional positions were added, as well as additional overtime related to the Hurricane Sally cleanup. Debt service totaled $670,000, and that's down roughly $3.2 million from the previous year, and that's because in 2019, the city paid off the 2011 and 2016 general obligation bonds. And then that last category, the other, was $2 million. That's up about $734,000, and that's primarily because of the Hurricane Sally expenses as well. On the utility side, everything was pretty consistent. You can see that electric fund revenue was, you know, within $500,000 of each other. The utility, the natural gas fund was comparable as well, and the water and wastewater went up just slightly. On the expense side, it's fairly comparable as well with the electric fund being, having $17 million in expenses. The gas fund had roughly $5.6 million in expenses, and then water and wastewater had $8.9 million. That was up approximately $780,000, and that was related to some additional depreciation in the year, as well as the Hurricane Sally expenses. And with that, I'm going to let Rick talk to you about the single audit and the outcome with that.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, counsel. I echo Lee's appreciation for being here and the opportunity to get to speak to you. With respect to the single audit, I worked a little bit on both sides, the financial statement audit as well as the single audit. A single audit is required by any entity that expends over $750,000 of federal funds, and it's a compliance audit by the federal government to ensure that those funds were expended with respect to the compliance requirements they set forth. For 2020, the City of Fairhope had one. I don't have the cool excerpt from my opinion, but there are two reports that you have to have over internal control of our financial reporting, as well as compliance requirements. And both of those were an unmodified opinion as well. That falls under the tab, well, it's in the handout that we gave you. Federal funds recognized for the year for September 30th, 2020 was $1.3 million. That is a decrease of $2.3 million from prior year. The majority of that was in 2019. There was the big airport expansion. I think it was about $1.3 million was the airport expansion in the prior year, yes. When in actuality, there was a really comparable amount of actual federal funds because of all the Hurricane Sally, about one, let's see, right there, about $1.3 million on the slide of Hurricane Sally money. That does not show up on the schedule of federal expenditures of awards in the year in which it was received. It was received in 2020, but those funds require that they be a confirmed work program in place before you can include those funds on your schedule of federal expenditures or audit them. When you think about what we do with a single audit, you have to audit to the compliance requirements of the funds themselves, the grant agreements and whatever drives those funds. And since those approved work programs weren't in place, then those funds will actually get picked up in 2021 on the schedule of federal expenditures. So the federal funds were really kind of in line with each year, but those funds will actually get picked up next year. So speaking of your schedule of federal expenditures of awards, this is it right here in a really colorful pie chart. I'm a little colorblind, but I can see all this. So you had two major programs this year. ALDOT, the Alternative Transportation Grant, in red there of 484171, that was a major program. That's the works that you've seen on sidewalks and the like, on 98 County Road 13, Manly Road, Gateford Avenue, and Greeno Road. That's that money. And then the other major program you had two this year, because you're kind of required to have a certain amount of coverage of federal funds, it's oftentimes you end up having to look at more than one program. The other major one was the Gulf Restore Grant in green of about $240,000, and that's the municipal pier and South Beach Park improvements, the work you saw going on there. And just like Lee said, any questions, don't hesitate to stop us. We know this kind of thing is super exciting. We love to talk about it, and so if anybody has any questions about it, don't hesitate to stop us at all. Required communications, so included in your packet behind one of the tabs that says, yes, it says required communications, are the communications that we are required to get to you at the end of every audit. We talked about our opinion, we've already talked about that. We talked about the scope and timing of our audit. It did not change since the engagement letter. We talked about significant accounting policies, and those are discussed in note one. All this is included in your required communications. Furthermore, professional standards require us to communicate any known or likely misstatements during an audit. A detailed listing of those was provided to you in our communication. They don't impact our audit opinion at all. There were no difficulties with management this year. We had no issues with management, and we're not aware of them discussing anything with any other auditors. That pretty much covers the required communications, and like I say, those are included behind the required communications tab in that packet with the pretty black cover. So that moves us on to findings and management's responses. Material weaknesses and significant deficiencies are the two types of findings you see. Material weaknesses are pretty much the same thing as a significant deficiency, or a group of significant deficiencies that could materially misstate, cause the financial statement to be materially misstated. Or, in the case of single audits, they could cause material noncompliance. In other words, they would change the user's idea if they knew that something was this wrong in them. Significant deficiencies are, of course, less than that, and don't rise to the level of impacting the financial statements or the single audit as a whole. However, we're required to bring them to your attention. This year, we did not, there were none, no material weaknesses reported. Once again, that doesn't mean there were none. That means there were none that we knew, that we know of. There were none that we saw. Significant deficiencies this year, we'll walk through, we'll walk through those now. First is with utility accounts receivable. There were some past due balances that were not submitted to collections in a timely manner. Like I say, this is not a material weakness. This is just a significant deficiency. It's an opportunity for the city to improve controls. Management's required to have responses to these and to implement those responses, and they are going to, as you see right there, they're going to monitor the utility accounts on a regular basis, and this will be implemented during the course of this year, this current year. Our next one is utility deposits. Per the billing system, they did not agree to the general ledger. So the information's in there, but once it comes to getting it into the general ledger, there was a little discrepancy there. And so the city will examine the utility billing system to ensure that accuracy and reconcile the deposit balance per the system to ensure that this is done when we look at it again this next year. But I think it'll be done on a quarterly or monthly basis. The third finding was related to inventory and its fleet inventory. So the inventory number was not updated in the general ledger. And again, when I say the general ledger, that's what we derive, that's what we pull down to audit the financial statements. So that's the city's accounting function. There's a lot of things that feed into it. One of them is this inventory system, and it wasn't updated with respect to the inventory system, causing an adjustment of $41,000. I think you'd find that on that list of, list of incorrect misstatements. Management's response is that they will reconcile that on a regular basis, on a monthly basis, to ensure that things are caught and addressed. The next one is fuel inventory. So the same inventory situation, just with fuel as opposed to fleet. The difference in those two systems resulted in an adjustment of $70,000. Management's going to reconcile those two systems on a monthly basis to ensure that that's adjusted so that when we look back at it...
Is that to the good or bad?
Is that to the good or bad? Given some of the prices that we heard in the earlier discussion, I mean, it might be to the good, that might not be a bad price to have in fuel right now. But I think fuel was understated.
Yeah, that's correct. Fuel was understated.
Okay.
And then these are both things that are, you know, easily incorrect.
Yeah. Are these pretty common?
Yes.
There's always going to be, listen, if we're doing our job, there's just about going to be something.
The main one is the utility deposits. That's more of a system conversion, carryover, where you convert it to the utility system, and the general ledger's saying one thing, but the utility billing system's saying another, and it's just a matter of, it's just, you know, taking the time to get down and correct it. We've spoken with Kim about it, and I think she's got a great game plan.
So to, the last and final is prepaid insurance, and that's where if you've got an expense that you have paid up ahead of time, that you adjust the general ledger to reflect that expense, and the balance of prepaid insurance did not agree, so it just wasn't adjusted at the time when it was examined. But like I said, that's a prepaid expense. That's not something that was all. Once again, the city's going to reconcile that on a monthly basis to ensure that any prepaid's are adjusted and reflected. So to kind of speak to your question, this is a historical view of the city's findings. The schedule illustrates the last four years of the city's findings. A couple of things to note here that are important. Now, we spoke earlier about what a material weakness was, and here's the definition right here. And you see that there have been several in the past. Two of the most important ones, and most impactful to the city, were capital assets and grants receivable. Any municipality is generally heavy in capital assets, and you'll see that in 17, 18, capital assets was a material weakness. In 2019, it dropped down, that second row, you see it to a significant deficiency. And you'll notice in '20 that there was no finding related to capital assets. Same trajectory for accounts for grant payable and grants receivable. You see a grant payable in '18 as a material weakness. You see a grant receivable, grant payable as 2019, material weakness. And then in 2020, you see that it falls off completely. Grant receivables and payables are something that's very impactful, and being able to track federal funds correctly and being good stewards of federal funds is something that's very important to the federal government. And so having that addressed and coming off the finding schedule completely is meaningful. In 2020, the city, if they have another year in 2021 of no material weaknesses, there is a chance they could be, they would be considered a low-risk auditee, which is a feather in the hat of any municipality.
And I'd just like to say one more thing about the fixed assets and the grant receivable and payable falling off. It sounds like it was a small feat, but it really was a lot of manpower, and Kim and Island should be credited for all the hard work they did to get that done. That's been something that the, that the system is kind of, the fixed asset system kind of causes a reporting to be difficult, and it takes a lot of work to get that corrected, so that's just...
It's like the longer Kim worked, the fewer bullets we have, which is a good thing.
Absolutely. Well, listen, with that, I think, we both thank you for your time. If there are any questions, we're happy to follow up on it, and happy to answer anything that you have, but it's been a pleasure.
Questions, counsel?
Just glad to see we don't have any, oh, just lost it, but no, yeah, no material weaknesses. That's, that's good.
If you had to give us a letter grade, what would you give us?
Well, you know, we, yeah.
Yeah. We're about to start, we're about to start better now. We can't, they don't do that.
I would say that on this, on this right here, yeah, it's, it's...
It's a passive failure.
The amount of work that y'all put in is, yeah. Significant efficiencies, they come and go. You'll pick one up here. The material weaknesses are going to be more systematic issues that this has to be addressed. Some of them, like for instance, fixed assets, was not going to be a one-year deal. You knew that, okay, we're going to work at it a little bit here, a little bit there, and that's why you see the slow progression. But I think this right here just shows the level of, you know, what Kim and her group are doing, and taking control.
Behind the curtain, this slide's about the best you'll ever give for some auditors that have worked their stall. They're like, hey, this is the good news, this is the improvement, this is what you can be proud of, and that's about as close as we ever get to saying it.
Okay. And I wouldn't try to put you on the spot, I know I can ask that, but anyway.
Well, no, thank you all.
Questions, Kevin? Yeah? All right. Appreciate you.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Mayor Sullivan, your report, please.
Thank you. I just have a few things tonight. First, I want to let everybody know that we have hired Jamie Rollins, who will be taking Paul Merchant's place when he retires in July, or the 1st of August. Jamie is a 15-year employee with the City of Fairhope and has kind of worked under Paul's wing for those 15 years, so really excited to have him, be able to give him the opportunity to step up into that leadership role and take on, you know, the city horticulturist supervisor position. So the other thing is the Auburn study, the study that we continue to talk about, seems like it's the ongoing project. That was, everything was mailed off from the city last, this past week to go to Auburn, so we are hoping to get a final report from them, the end of May is what our contract says. It could be, you know, into June somewhat, but hopefully we'll be wrapping that project up fairly soon. That will give us all new job descriptions, as well as a compensation study. The other thing, just want to let everybody know, the peer work started today on reestablishing those utilities. The employees worked today to put together the utility tray. Expect to see them out there tomorrow, the next couple of days, reestablish, you know, putting the utility tray out and then starting to reestablish those utilities, so we're excited about that. And also, we have arts and crafts this weekend, so I know our staff has been working hard, making sure Fairhope is shining and looking its best to welcome all the visitors to town this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sullivan. All right, public participation. If you would like to address the council on items six through now 25, I can ask you to come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. You will be given three minutes, and we should have a timer right below me here. Court, will you give me a heads up if we reach the expiration?
My name is Lieutenant Mike Williams, and I live at 154 Gaston. I'm here just to reiterate the significance of the emails that all of you have received from Howell Rains regarding the green space project at Bluff and in that area. He cannot be here most unworthably and with deep regret. Since you have his emails, and they were updated and revised today in response to some really good feedback he got, there's no reason for me to read what you have. That's just, you know, not good use of your time, but just please accept the editorial. I think he is trying to emphasize something I strongly believe in, that that area of this city is simply irreplaceable, probably on the globe. It's been here long before the founders created this place, and hopefully it will always be here, and once it has changed, it's changed. So all we do is urge that the process to change it kind of slow down, look at all options, the process be open to many different ideas continuing, and the slight delay is not going to cost you more money, the money's not going anywhere. So that's what I'd like to iterate, and you have this communication, there's no reason for me to read it to you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Knight. I live at 50 North Bayview Street here in Fairhope, and I would like to speak to the Bayfront Project. I would like to compliment the mayor and the design team on the modifications they made to the current scope that they have presented. I think that is a really significant improvement over the original scope that was proposed by the last administration, and I think the residents, for the most part, who are following this and paying attention, are happy to see the... are happy to see the changes that were made. I would also like to suggest that, uh, the scope of the project could be looked at even further and many more improvements could be made. I think that, uh, the citizens of Fairhope really enjoy what it now is called Utopia Park. I think that's a beautiful strip park at the top of the bluff and actually requires no improvements whatsoever. To eliminate more green space by the addition of more sidewalks up there would be a huge mistake. We don't need any more sidewalks, we just need more green space. I think the project would be vastly improved if the bluffs were left untouched. The staircases that are currently there are just fine, they've been there for years. The people who use that park go up and down those stairs many times every day and they work just fine. I think if the scope was reduced in that manner, the project would be wildly acceptable to the residents of the community and get unbelievable support. And I encourage you to take the time to consider those scope modifications. It would be a great improvement to the project. I think the engineers and designers who are involved with the project would also realize that if it weren't for such demand to create a larger project, they may never have suggested those modifications in the first place. I would also suggest that on all these major public works, projects, the incorporation of peer review in the projects would be a great asset for the city. I have worked on several federal courthouses as a design professional and at that level, those projects all require peer reviews. Teams of qualified professionals come in and review the work that's being proposed by the people who've been hired to do the project. It's a valuable step in creating public projects that are really top-flight. And in line with that, I think it's an important question to ask, who in this process has the responsibility to ask if the project being proposed enhances or detracts from the beauty of our city? Sometimes it's more important or just as important to get the water into the catch basin, but it's also important to know what the catch basin is going to look like and how that's gonna impact the overall visual quality of the system. And I think that's an important element that is missing. I think we had to answer that question today, who is responsible to ask that question? And who is responsible to ask it? It would be fun to know what that answer would be. I appreciate your time. I hope my comments are taken in the spirit that I have presented to make this a terrific project and one that we all love for many years to come. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Chuck Zunk. I live at fifty-nine White Avenue. Uh, honorable mayor and council members, I'm speaking tonight on agenda item ten, as have the two speakers before me. And many of my thoughts have already been stated by them, so I'll just give you my brief summary of how I see things. Firstly, uh, as Chris said, I applaud the latest revisions and the fact that you've taken into account the feedback previously received from many concerned citizens and users of that very valuable piece of Fairhope's heritage. Secondly, I express the concern, shared by many others of those same citizens, that there are still too many unanswered questions about certain features of the revised design. To go forward at this time with approval of the proposed resolution in item ten by the city council is, in my opinion, premature. More specifically, I suggest that city council table agenda item ten and in its place, put forward a resolution for the mayor to seek proposals for independent professional advice regarding viable options available to the city for compliance with ADA consistent with grant requirements. Regardless of whether the grant will cover this expense or not, the credibility of current information about ADA compliance is so compromised that, in my opinion, anything less than an independent professional review is unacceptable. Thanks for your consideration.
Before I let anybody else come up, I just gotta, unlike a commia, um, council, uh, the mayor and I spoke, uh, earlier today and I, I know, uh, Phil, Councilman Conyers in is that, uh, I believe that we are going to recommend that very thing is that independent review of that ADA compliance. So for those of you that want to talk about that, you're welcome to, but I did want to just, you know, let you, put your mind at ease on that, on that one subject. So the floor's still open.
Well, since you agree with me, I applaud your committee.
Thank you, Chuck. Anyone else? Still items six through twenty-five. Okay. Seeing no one else, I'll close public participation and we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Martin.
Now, I just want to thank Ms. Lori on fourteen eighty this morning for accepting me this morning to speak on her radio show. Um, give her a little shout-out. Uh, fourteen eighty, listen in, guys, if you don't know about it.
Um, just wanted to say a big thank you to the Arts and Crafts Festival Committee. Uh, they work really, really hard to put this event on and, um, certainly we've had a lot of curveballs this year, so thanks in advance to them. And also Eastern Shore Repertory Theater, Wizard of Oz, performance back on the bluff and that will be, um, next week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that's May sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth at seven thirty PM. And they're almost sold out, so if you're interested in going, um, get online and purchase a ticket. And we have two of our, um, Fairhope Junior City Council members are two of the leads this year, Isabel McCormick and Victoria Watley. So come support them and should be a great show.
Councilman Robinson?
No comment.
Councilman Boone?
Actually, the only thing I had, if y'all have missed the, uh, work that the Junior City Council did down there at the beach, at the, uh, steps, I thought was pretty neat. And I think they did a wonderful job and presented to this council and followed through with the work that they did. I thought it was very nice.
I want to, uh, thank everybody involved with the Arts and Crafts Festival that's coming up, uh, later this week. You know, uh, none other than our own mayor has been, you know, very instrumental in that, that she is the chairman of the Arts and Crafts Festival for, I believe, the second year. So I want to thank you for that and, uh, you know, I think it's, it's one of my favorite times of the year in, in Fairhope, so I want to encourage everybody to come out and follow all the social distancing guidelines and, uh, but, uh, enjoy yourself and, uh, spend some money in our town. Appreciate that. Also, I want to thank all the citizens that have written letters, um, in regard to the bluff stabilization project. We, we do hear all of your concerns and, uh, when we get to item ten, I think that you will, uh, hear, uh, of a compromise, uh, and, and, and asking for more time. Uh, I don't know if you'll see a table, but I think you might see a component that's been very controversial removed until we can get, uh, clarification on that. So appreciate your, your patience with that. And with that, I'll close council comments and we'll move on to item six, which is final adoption of an ordinance, amending zoning ordinance number twelve fifty-three, a request to amend ordinance number sixteen sixty-four, known as the Clump PUD, the property of Gafer, of Gafer Village Partners, generally located on the west side of State Highway one eighty-one between Gafer Road and Fairhope Avenue. Uh, you can see the parcel numbers there. This contains about seventy-six acres, more or less. Mr. Simmons?
Thank you, council. This is an amendment to a PUD approved, uh, formally, I believe, in two thousand nineteen. Uh, the property is, uh, as, as Councilman said, uh, on the northwest corner of Fairhope Avenue and Highway one eighty-one. I won't repeat this because it's in the, the summary. I will say that Mr. Scott Hutchinson is, uh, representing Goodwood Mills and Kaywood and is the engineer of record here, if there are any questions. Uh, the existing layout and Councilman, um, Martin, you asked a good question last month at the end of my presentation. So I'm gonna, I want to kind of give a, a, a explanation here for the public. When you see units here, there's three units. This is almost, uh, eighty acres, so it's a big piece of property, sometimes we lose scale. Units in this PUD are, are a boundary to kind of, to, um, group-like uses. So unit one in this previously proposed was the res, the retail component. Uh, unit two was the three-story apartment complexes and unit three was a single-family, dense, R-three-type development. So that's what the units were in these improvements and there are conditions on each one of those units. So the unit layout, uh, as it's shown on the previously approved plan, and this was a, a drawing submitted to show how the, that layout can look. And then, of course, we had our conditions and, and changes to those units. So moving to the proposed, uh, plan, the unit one is still retail, uh, with a reduction in acreage, uh, on that one. Unit two, as opposed to the previously proposed three-story apartment buildings are single-story, two-story, um, duplex and triplex townhome rentals. So they're spread out of around forty-one acres. It's spread out, um, but essentially the same unit count. Unit three, as opposed to being a single-family residential, is also a density approaching R-three, but it is limited to assisted living nursing home, um, a retirement kind of type of community. The layout is drawn, um, the site plan that goes along with this PUD will be controlled by, um, the, both what is shown on the plan and the notes included within the plan. So this shows a, a, of not finalized, but a proposed layout of the units. Uh, that will be further defined as we move to either whatever plan comes for next, which is that preliminary plat to create these lots, um, an MOP site plan, whichever is, um, reviewed by the planning commission and potentially a city council, depending on which that is. So, uh, this is the plan, as you see, and some of the guidelines, kind of how we got here, looking at the end result, some of the restrictions, as we said, unit three is, is restricted to the, uh, convalescent nursing or assisted living homes. Excuse me, my pocket is buzzing. We do have some conditions within this. Each lot in unit one shall provide its own stormwater control and conditions as proposed by the, the development team. There were some guidelines on, a, as you can see in unit two and unit three, I'm sorry, unit one and unit three, there are not proposed buildings on the site. So how do you address in a PUD the, and give the developer the flexibility, but address what we want to see in a PUD, that it is a unique development? And there's some controls over what that looks like and its impact to the city. So we have implemented a condition of approval that each of those sites in the retail and unit three will have future site plan reviews. So each of those will come back to the planning commission and the city council. And we, we went over this last month, I won't, uh, beat this point. It was us, how some of the things changed, um, as originally proposed. They included more sidewalks based on our comments. The buffer to the property, as shown on the plan, to the top of the screen, uh, which is residential, was, was increased and, and a sidewalk trail system was, uh, implemented that will connect Fairhope Avenue with Gafer. That's shown on this plan. Um, we do have some architectural guidelines, uh, on the, on the plans and that will direct how the commercial and unit three will be developed. If you'll notice the green space at the top, that was the transition as it transitions to residential. So looking at the image on the lower part of the screen, you can see that combined forty-five foot setback and buffer. It's hard to see that if, when you look at the eighty acres in total, but that forty-five foot is there and will be a, a nice buffer to the property, adjacent property. So the Clump PUD, the staff recommendation was approval with the conditions and those conditions were a master drainage plan shall be prepared for the entire site and, and included with the initial subdivision application that will create units one through three. The, number two, the City of Fairhope site plan review shall be mandatory for each lot within the units one through three. Number three, the City of Fairhope subdivision regulations, including multiple occupancy project provisions as applicable, shall be required for the creation of all lots and units within the Clump PUD. Number four, a twenty-foot green space and tree preservation strip shall be provided along Highway one eighty-one. Number five, unit two will require twenty percent green space as shown, providing retention and detention shall not encroach into acquired green space other than those methods approved within the City of Fairhope subdivision regulations and/or as approved during MOP site plan review. And finally, the planning commission did add a, a sixth condition during those meetings that the construction of sidewalks shall be done at the time of development of the internal roadways. This was heard by the planning commission in December of two thousand twenty and approved, recommended to the council for approval unanimously. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those this time.
Questions, council?
Um, yeah, with the, the parking and the drainage, uh, it's, when we say we're gonna, with the two hundred and thirty-two units or the apartment complex, that's a lot of concrete, a lot of parking, will that be permeable? Since we have a, you know, we're, we're already dealing with, with stormwater and this and that, is that part of the plan?
So this, we, we will look at those things during preliminary reviews. Um, this is actually spreading out those two hundred and thirty-two units, um, over forty, a little over forty acres as opposed to the three-story apartments that we're gonna concentrate those. In, in some minds, that's a plus, some, it's a subjective. So, but we will absolutely be looking at those detention, retention, uh, problems and drainage at the overall site. And that's why the condition you see, this whole site needs to be thought of and how drainage will be maintained, not piecemealed.
Right.
So there will need to be a master drainage plan at the first subdivision phase. We do have some guidelines on impervious surfaces and we will address those as part of those, naturally as those reviews within each phase and each unit.
Just to piggyback on that, good question, Councilman Martin. If we don't really know what phase three or unit three is gonna look like, how do you know how to, how do you come up with a drainage plan for something that you don't even know what the buildings are gonna look like? You don't know what the parking's gonna look like?
Right. Um, but you have to think about the conveyance system. So how is drainage gonna move throughout this site as a whole? And then when your buildings come in, you're gonna have drains, you're gonna have your, your paving and how does that get to the conveyance system to, to look at this site? So, so there, there will be some answers left to, to determine during those more technical reviews of most, most likely MOP or preliminary plat stages.
You know, council, when this came up, the original pud came up, I voted against it. I didn't like the density, uh, on the west side and, uh, this, this is fewer units, which is better. Uh, you know, this is one of those old, you know, and back when we, kind of talking about the first time we approved it, it's one of those catch-twenty-twos that if you don't approve it, they don't what they want, you don't have any controls over it, you might end up with something worse than if you do try to control it. But I, you know, I do have concerns with, with the density, which this, this, I believe, plan is better and they've made several concessions, which I believe are better. Uh, but just in, in general, when we talk about puds and, you know, we can say what goes in a pud, what doesn't go in a pud. I, I really, I just want to say that I, I have heartache with, without a lot of this being defined. There's a, there's a, there's a large area here that's, that's undefined. Uh, unit three is undefined and there's a, you know, there's an estimate of how many, uh, units might be in an assisted living facility, uh, you know. You know, it was approximately, when you look at this, at one time, there was approximately sixty-seven residential lots in the old Unit Three, which is a little bit of a different shape, well, actually completely different shape there. So you can't really compare that to the fifty-nine and the, and the one that's relatively I wish we had a way to, you know, really put our foot down and say, you can't exceed this density or that density, and just, I wish we had more detail about, about some of these things. Knowing that when I say that, though, if we don't allow certain things, we could get something worse than, than what's proposed.
Well, we do get another look at it at the site plan review.
Well, that, that, that's a good point. And I was gonna say, you know, we, but we hear it all the time, well, why didn't you tell me six months ago? Well, we don't have the site plan to give you a decision on. I don't want people to get comfortable that just because they bring us a site plan, we're gonna rubber stamp it. Yes, that's the point in saying that. And I think we need to, you know, really critique whatever the site plan is. Especially when you give us a blank drawing and say we don't know what we're gonna get.
You're subject to...
Yeah.
And I will say that, you know, we have looked at this and kinda how the city responded, especially uses. So when someone has a PUD that is specific and, and buildings are shown and use, units are shown and, and uses are included, it's easier to negotiate those terms when it's blank slate. What the city's done in the past is just restrict the uses on some of the, you know, especially commercial. There was a five-lot subdivision we were, we're reviewing right now that was approved a few years ago that had restrictions on it. You know, no drive-throughs, no certain issues. That's a common approach when you have a, something like this. It doesn't mean there can't be. It just means that applicant has to come back and amend it to include those with specifics.
And in their, to their credit, they did limit use of Unit Three to only, says limited to convalescent nursing or assisted living.
Yes, sir. And that's at the R-three density. So by the time you knock out your green space, your, your R-three density, we, we don't know exactly what that looks like, but we kinda have an idea. So you're not gonna get into an R-four, R-five density on that site.
And it started out R-five, by the way.
We got a flip-flop here of, it, actually it did. I think it was proposed as R-five in this amendment.
Yep. So, and it's continuously changing, is what I'm...
The recommendation was unanimous for approval? Council, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Clark, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item number seven is an ordinance granting Telepac Networks Incorporated and its affiliates doing business has cease fire the right to use the rights, the right of ways within the City of Fairhope to provide telecommunications services and video services to the city, citizens of the city under the terms and conditions of a construction right-of-way use of franchise agreement pursuant to the agreement stated in the ordinance. And I would ask you to look at that. May I have someone introduce this ordinance, please?
I'll introduce ordinance.
Okay. I would also, Council, this would normally lay over, but, you know, this is something, and I'm gonna go ahead and, and speak to item number eight, which is nearly another identical request. This is, these are both companies that want to bring fiber to the homes, enhance our citizens' quality of life and, you know, improved internet, or whether it's, you know, it's streaming video services, whatever it is that, that one in their home. We have a lot of people working from home these days, telecommuning, and it's just, it's in high demand, and we, we're in a very unique situation tonight that we have two before us. And I think that the sooner we approve these, the better. The agreements make no concessions to waiving any fees, waiving any, whether that be permit fees or right-of-way fees. Our consultant, Mr. Fender, made sure that he treated them both equally, and we were very careful to do that. And what we didn't give to one, we didn't give to the other, and we actually gave neither of them any concessions. So I don't really see the need to delay. If you'd like to, I would understand, but I would, would ask you to consider suspending with the rules with both of these tonight and approving both of these so that, so that we can get these services to our people as, as fast as possible. Any questions? Okay. Would anybody like to entertain a motion to suspend with the rules and...
Do we need to introduce it first?
Yeah, we...
The other one, do we have to, or is it...
Well, we'll go to it. So do it. Yeah.
Yeah, I make the motion, we suspend with the rules and for immediate consideration.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I know that there's a lot. There is a lot, and there was a lot of back and forth between attorneys on both sides. I was involved quite a bit looking at this, just making sure that everything was, you know, equal. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer, but it's, it's quite a lengthy franchise agreement there. We could get Mr. Fender on the phone if necessary. Okay. I have a motion in a second. Clark, will you call the question on the question of immediate, immediate consideration?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. So can entertain a motion for final adoption?
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Clark, will you call, will you call the question, please?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item number eight is an ordinance granting a non-exclusive authorization to point broadband fiber holding LLC for the purpose of construction and maintaining a fiber optic transmission line within certain public right-of-ways within the City of Fairhope, Alabama for the provision on broadband services pursuant to the agreement stated in the ordinance. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
I make a motion, we suspend with the rules and consider immediate consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for immediate consideration. And, Council, I will tell you that some of these agreements, they do differ. I mean, you know, they're, they have attorneys that will write a draft, and then we, you know, the language might be slightly different, but...
The terms.
The terms are all, the terms are all, are all the same. Okay. We have a motion and a second for immediate consideration. Clark, will you call the question, please?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Can I entertain a motion for final adoption?
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing no discussion. Clark, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Council. And I, I hope that, I hope that in the very, very near future, that our citizens can be rewarded by, by us awarding these two franchise agreements. All right. Item nine is a resolution. Certain items are declared surplus, and the Mayor and City Treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to dispose of personal property owned by the City of Fairhope by one of the following methods: receiving bids for such property via GOF deals sold to the highest bidder, provided however that the City Council have, shall have the authority to reject all bids. Within its opinion, it deems the bids to be less than adequate consideration for the personal property; or two, sold for scrap or recycled at the highest offered value; or three, disposal via landfill. You should have a list of all these items in the full resolution in your package. You have any questions about that? Long list, looks like a heck of a sale.
You ready to get twenty-year-old trill?
Hope they do as good as those golf carts. Yeah. Anybody looking for a Crown Vic?
R-F?
F-four-fifty. F-four-fifty, there you go. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to declare these surplus and authorize for disposal by the means mentioned. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item number ten. None of you are interested in this one, are you? Item number ten is a resolution. The City Council approves the proposed scope of work and authorizes continuing work on the related engineering for Phase One of the Working Waterfront and Green Space Project known as the Fairhope Municipal Pier and South Beach Park Improvements. The City of Fairhope subaward grant from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources as part of the Resources and Ecosystems Sustainability Tourist Opportunities and Revive Economies of the Gulf Coast States Act known as the, more commonly as the Restore Act. Mayor Sullivan, jump in and, and help me out, but by and large, what I've heard from the people is that there was a plan presented, there was a public comment period, there were a lot of people, a lot of citizens opposed to much of, maybe not much, but several items which were in the plan. The Mayor and staff went back to the drawing board and came back with a revised plan. And I think that the feedback has generally been very, very good with the proposed changes. With the exception of stairs and a ramp that will be located, or is proposed to be located at the south end of this park, there have been a few objections to the placement of the bathrooms. And I'll just tell you, in, in regards to that, the scope of work would include the bathrooms, but where they go on the map is subject to debate. We just need to know whether or not to put them in. I believe that the Council wants to leave them in. A lot of the debate has focused on whether or not we have to construct a ramp because we are proposing to refurbish the stairs. And I do hear many of you saying that we need to refurbish the stairs. It was the city's position that to follow the ADA guidelines, we had to construct a ramp. That is being disputed, those facts are being disputed. And I believe that in fairness to everyone, and, you know, I got a call from the Mayor on this, like I said earlier, right after citizens' comments or public participation, and I didn't really know where she was gonna go with that. And I, I mean, what she proposed to me was exactly what I was gonna propose to her and propose to this, this governing body, is to remove the ramp for now and hire an independent third-party expert to tell us what exactly would be required. And I think that's the only fair way to do that. So, Council, if that is acceptable, Clark, help me out, Mr. City Attorney, help me out, what we might need to do? If we could just state for the record that we would remove the ramp following information from an expert in ADA compliance? Would it be as simple as putting that language in, the scope of work? And Council, I, now I wanna hear your comments. Mayor, did I miss anything? I'm sure I did, so straighten me out.
No, you did not miss anything. But understand, I don't know that there's anything to remove, 'cause the scope of work that you're approving is, does not outline the ramp. And this conceptual that you see, again, is a conceptual. So I think your statement just needs to say that you're approving the scope of work, you're approving the concept, knowing that we are going to get independent review of this component of the project. And based on those findings, it may be removed from the overall plan. So, because it's not that narrow. This, the scope does not outline each component. It doesn't say a bathroom, two sets of stairs, a ramp system, it doesn't say any of that. So I don't know that you have to...
So how was it, if you say, how was it included in the scope of work, then? I feel more comfortable removing, being...
You can say to remove it, but it's not in there to remove, correct?
I would, I would suggest saying it, to, to not include one right now.
It's listed under pedestrian improvements. Okay. So, yeah, then, I, I don't know that you wanna say remove it, but you would want to say contingent on an independent review? Because, don't get me wrong, I respect Marcus's legal opinion and also Lisa's opinion, but this is a restore grant, so we have to just make sure that we're following all the rules and regulations that they set forth as well. So...
Council, what's your pleasure? I would remove it. That's my personal...
And you can remove it, but...
And then we, and with the understanding that if the ADA consultant says we, we modify those steps, it's gotta, it's gotta be done, that it's, it's gonna be added.
So right now, we're speaking on just the scope, right now. And, and the scope is just the delivery of supplies and such in the contract with the people that are working. From what I understand, legality-wise, we're not really talking about the actual plan right now, which is a big difference. This is just a conceptual. So the plan can always, the scope can always be amended, the plan can be always be amended. From what I understand, these things are, are fluid. So I just want people to...
Yeah, but they can move around like the bathrooms can move around, but they need to be included in the scope. So to me, if there's a ramp included, you know, it, how do you...
I, I would say just add the, add the, yeah, contingent upon a third-party review. And for ADA compliance, yeah, for ADA compliance. I mean, I don't know that you have to remove it or leave it in, but you can make it contingent on that. And, of course, every piece and component has to come back before this council forbid.
All of it's gotta be subject to ADA compliance anyway, whether or not that, that one aspect has to be there or not. It has to be subject, the plans and everything, once you get that in place, have to be subject to ADA, 'cause you're dealing with federal money, grant money. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to jeopardize that by doing something here that's excluding a certain point that may or may not be, you know, included. I, I just think that...
Could you just do a separate resolution that says that that component of the project?
Well, we could. I think what you probably need to do is just authorize somebody as part of the planning phase to look at this from a, an ADA compliance issue. 'Cause there could be a, a different area that they could put a ramp into, they could, they could build it into that area right next to, you know, the, the street that's running down to the pond. I, I don't know the answer to all that. That's an engineering question and a, and a compliance thing. I'm just worried about the grant money and making sure that, because they are real strict on everything's gotta be ADA compliant. Then you start looking at experts and engineers to tell you what is actually ADA compliant and what's not, and whether that, the, the piece of land that they're talking about, that they wanna move it or they don't, you know, that folks don't like having that ramp there, if they could move it to a different area, I just don't know the answer to that.
I think the opponents don't want it moved to another area. I think the opponents are opposed to it because of the impact to the bluff, as I understand it. Can I get a nod?
But I also think the review done by an ADA professional ought to tell us whether it's warranted or not based on ADA compliance. And if it is warranted, possibly they look at the best location for that structure. I mean, obviously for...
Say the scope of work would, to, to include, to include...
Independent.
The, the ramp, if an independent ADA compliance expert deems it necessary.
You could, yeah.
So...
I mean, you could, could we not just simply approve the scope of work contingent upon a third-party independent review of the ADA compliance issues?
Just like you did with that, with that resolution, where you had on contingent on City Council, City Attorney approval of the contract. You put this contingent on ADA compliant review.
Yeah, but you could, you could put a ramp in there if you don't need it for ADA compliance. So by that, you're, you're always including it as opposed to the other, right? Let's say you don't need it, and it's in the scope, and it doesn't matter. So, and by that token, if you've got it in there, the expert says you do or you don't need it, it's still in there.
But we still make that decision, right?
We gotta come back and say yes or no.
We gotta come back to us for the plan. Now, I'm just asking, I, I'm asking.
You still gotta come back and approve plans on it anyway, bathroom locations and whatnot. That's still, this is just concept and approving the initial, that's why I'm kinda, I don't wanna take out something that is mandatory with what these grants are requiring. And they may not even require a ramp over there. I don't know the answer to that.
I think it would, to a point of being very specific, by that token, we could put thirty items in there right now. And I don't think we can.
That's why I think it's a concept versus the planning phase of it and the actual drawings that you would approve.
Yeah. And, and on the conceptual, Jessica just pulled it up for me, it does... And on the conceptual, Jessica just pulled it up for me, it does say, under number 2D, new switchback handicap ramp. So you would want to say that either remove it, I guess, or say that it is contingent based on the opinion or expert advice from an ADA professional with, and of course, with counsel for approval.
Yeah. No, I got, that's what I'm saying. The plan's not specific, but the scope's pretty specific.
But this isn't a scope. This is on the conceptual.
That's a conceptual.
It's on the conceptual. When we discuss pedestrian improvements, it's listed there. So it's on the conceptual.
We're asked to approve the scope of work right now.
Well, the, yeah, the scope of work includes the, includes this information. Right, the pedestrian improvement plan.
Scope of work is pretty specific. For instance, if you're going to paint a building, you're going to put in the scope of work, you're going to paint the building, but you may not have the color of paint chosen yet. But it's in the scope of work.
And you can vote to remove it. What we're going to have to, I guess, find out is once you approve it from, you know, the restore count, from the restore folks, the ACBNR, can that be added back in? That's why...
I think, I think that your first language might still be the best about, you know, contingent upon...
I think that's the best.
The opinion of...
An expert.
Third-party expert.
Third-party expert.
Third-party expert on the ADA compliance.
Right. I just want people to understand that this, these projects, these restore projects are not easy to manipulate. As far as, you know, the scope of work, that's why we have gone through this long process of public engagement and bringing it before the council. You have a conceptual and each piece and part and component of that has to be bid. But, I mean, there are some strict guidelines when it comes to using this federal money. And we just want to make sure we're good stewards of that and that we're following the process, so we don't have to pay that money back.
Well, we don't want to, we need an answer quickly because we don't want the architects and engineers wasting a lot of time designing something that may or may not be in there.
Right. And I think if you, if you pass tonight that it's contingent on that review, and even if we pay for that review, the city pays for that review, I think that we would be okay to pull it completely, knowing that we might go and add it back in based on the review? I don't know that that would work.
Lisa, have you got that language?
Contingent upon third-party expert for ADA compliance.
Contingent upon the opinion of... I'm sorry, man. I'll give you 30 seconds, but we're beyond public, you know, input.
The scope currently shows a new stair being added in the center of the bluff. That will have an impact on the ADA determination. It is not a matter of refurbishing those stairs. You've added a new stair and that will impact the interpretation.
Which is exactly why we thought that we needed to put in the ramp, because of the new stairs.
And it may just be, Councilman Burrell, that we want to put in there that we'll have an independent review done of all the pedestrian improvements. And that way, you're covered the stairs and the ramp and everything. But there are a lot of people who'd like that additional set of stairs.
Right. But then you got to, would they like the modifications or additions that have to come with that to meet the compliance? So, Mr. Knight, if I may, if, so, so it sounds to me like you're almost in agreement with, then, with the city's opinion that if we added a new staircase, it was something additional, that it would require a ramp.
That could be the interpretation. The other way to look at that, if the new stair weren't added and the stairs have been there previous to 1992, a ramp would not be required. And the city currently complies with the accessibility requirements.
Back to...
What we have right now.
Okay. All right. Any more comments? More questions? It's difficult. We're trying to get it right. All right, counsel, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed scope of work with the additional language. Would you read that again, the record?
Contingent upon the opinion of third-party expert for ADA compliance in all pedestrian improvements.
Okay.
I make a motion. We approve resolution as proposed with that amended language.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Yeah, I guess I would, would just say, you know, to Mr. Knight's point is, there is also the option to not add those stairs. It was my understanding, though, based on the last several meetings, that we had wanted those additional stairs. And we would have to, that would be maybe another discussion. Be, A, do we need them, do we need a ramp with the addition of those? B, would we...
If we took that out?
We took that out. You know, is there another location? Could something else just be modified? Because I'm going to tell you the truth. This is me thinking here. The ramp seems like a good idea, but I'm not married to it either. I mean, if, if we meet compliance, if we meet compliance and then there is a way for the, you know, the bottom line, the park to be inaccessible...
Right.
To, to everyone.
To everyone.
Right. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, to everyone.
Okay. All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, item 11 is a resolution. The City Council hereby approves and authorizes the Osprey Platform Project and its proposed location at the Fairhope docks as recommended at the April 12, 2021 City Council Work Session by Code Enforcement Officer Kim Burmeister and Mayor Sherri Sullivan. You all remember the Osprey Platform Project presented at the last work session?
Yep. I make a motion when we approve as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. We'll point out that there, that's right on the line. There's some new signs there, put on that, that beach. We don't want to wander too far down that beach, so we have a motion in a second. Clerk?
Yes, you do.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 12 is a resolution to award RFQ for Geographic Information System Services Contract for the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Grant, a Restore Act Project for the Fairhope Area Community-Based Comprehensive Land Use Plan to Goodwood Mills and Kaywood with a total not to exceed fees of $97,500. entertain a motion to award that?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Why do I feel like we voted on this?
Probably because you sat through the presentations.
And you did vote on this, but if you remember, we went back and we had to rescind it because of a clerical error that we had to go back through procurement process.
Okay. So we actually did go back through procurement.
Turns out you have seen this, but then you rescinded it.
So we did rescind it. We didn't re-approve it right away.
So here we are again.
That sounded awful familiar. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Where am I at again, clerk? Moving.
You have a motion in a second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to award the RFQ. All those in favor, counsel, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 13 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope approves the selection of J&amp;M displays for professional show design and fireworks for the Fourth of July, 2021 event pursuant to the Code of Alabama Pyrotechnic Shooter Law for the Community Affairs Department with a total cost of $32,000 and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute the contract. Let's get a motion in a second, and I'm going to ask a few questions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. So mayor, we're going to use the existing fireworks for this show?
We are not going to use the existing fireworks. We have some fireworks in the bunker at the fire department, but Zimbelli's is actually picking those up and transporting them to Miami, and they are giving us credit for those fireworks.
Okay. I knew there were some fireworks existing and...
We are not a fireworks seller. We can't sell fireworks.
So the distributor can take it and credit us for that.
Correct.
Okay. All right, and so, hate to say it, but, you know, I want to see the chief here.
I asked Chief Elsie, I think he had to step away.
So what happened, you know, the fire department, partially due to COVID, weren't able to participate in so many fireworks displays in a certain amount of time to keep certified, so they lost their certification. So we have to go to a third-party to have the event put on, and that's costing us how much more than normal?
$17,000.
$17,000? And there's no way to get our fire department recertified over the next couple of years or anything? Do we have a plan to try to do that or anything?
We do not at this time. I mean, there's been a lot of changes in the laws concerning fireworks and, you know, liability with insurance carriers and stuff. And we really, to be honest, do not have the firemen who are interested in being certified any longer. We also have some issues with the bunker that we currently have at the fire station. We're going to have to revisit that because there's a subdivision pushing in against the fire station that is going to prevent that bunker from housing fireworks because of the, the distance to the, to the homes. So, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of obstacles right now. So right now, we are not working on a plan to have the fire department shoot those.
And we've also kind of polled a lot of our neighboring municipalities, and everybody around us does kind of outsource their whole fireworks show, turnkey show, to these folks who are actually certified in the state of Alabama. So with the state Fire Marshal's Office, they have kind of, in 2019, have, have put some pretty stringent guidelines on what they can, what they consider a certified shooter. And so our folks, you know, being volunteers, would have to go through a 16-hour course, would have to be what they call covered for six fireworks display shows, which for our, at our rate, doing two shows a year would take a three-year span to get certified. And right now, like mayor was saying, we just, we really don't have anybody who is pursuing that certification, so...
They might reconsider it if you said you give them to get, go get certified, pay for their certification, and each fireworks show they'd get $1,000 or $1,500.
I mean, I thought we were working on that house.
I mean, we've, we've always done it that way. And, you know, now I keep hearing, over the last several years, we talk to everybody else and this is how they do it. I used to hear, this is how Fairhope does it. Now I hear this is how everybody else does it. And I like to hear, this is how Fairhope does it.
I mean, honestly, after speaking to a lot of different firework display companies, this is kind of a dying art, is what they, I mean, most places with the large liability that it carries to deliver, to shoot, to maintain a secure site. I mean, it's, it's a, they joke basically that, that there are so few licensed crews and so many folks who are wanting to do shows for the Fourth of July, on the Fourth of July. I mean, they're booking 12 months out. So it's hard to get a show on the actual Fourth. So we're, we're very fortunate right now that we are able to find somebody out there. Actually, after COVID, a lot of people kind of honored contracts when folks canceled in 2020. So a lot of those contracts rolled over to 2021. So they're just, it's just a small, small pool of folks that are able to shoot in the state, so...
And I know, well, this is costing us $17,000 more. New Year's Eve is going to cost us how much more than it used to cost?
Right. And one thing I want to say is Paige did a great job, kind of brokering this deal, like getting Zimbelli's to come pick up the other fireworks and getting credit for those. I mean, she really worked hard. I kind of put some pressure on her and told her, listen, my first year as mayor, we have to have fireworks. Because it took a little bit to find somebody who would even shoot them on the Fourth of July. I mean, we were sweating it there for a while, so we were really excited.
So it was about you?
It is about me, yes. For this, I guess.
Well, and I mean, we are really getting almost a full refund. We are getting...
Put us good there?
Go ahead, God, take it down. Yes, I cannot have my first year as mayor and not have fireworks on the Fourth of July. That would not look good. I know how important that is to our community. But Paige did a great job brokering this deal, and it is...
No, we do, no, we do appreciate that.
Yes, she did. She really did. So thank you.
We've just been spoiled for so long.
We have been. And that's really the, the true meaning behind all of this, is we've been very fortunate. The volunteers have done it for years and years and years. And everybody who I've spoken to is like, oh my goodness, you've only paid $15,000 every year, and that, that show is a quality show. And, and we, we've been truly spoiled. But, you know, as, as we talked about, with the, with the Fire Marshal Office, they are just, they really are, I mean, they're requiring...
The fire lobby's gotten really powerful because I see it all along the beach with the, all the inspections that, you know, they've gone from annual to semi-annual to quarterly and monthly and, you know, weekly runs. And I mean, it just, and that lobby just keeps on at it, you know?
They do all the permitting, they carry all the licensing, anything with the Coast Guard, anything with the State Fire Marshal's Office, they carry all of that for us, you know. And after talking with, like, City of Gulf Shores for a lengthy period of time, we're very fortunate that we still have a working pier to be able to shoot fireworks off of. God love them, but they are actually trying to get a barge to shoot their fireworks this year because their pier, their municipal pier is not functioning. So they're looking at even those amount of costs on top of what their normal budget is for Fourth of July. So anyways, we, we're excited. I think that it, it may look a little different as far as setup goes. If we do proceed with this contract, we may have to have setup being a day or two prior to the Fourth, which we're not used to. That's just how those companies do work, but, but yeah, if y'all have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions, counsel? All right, we do have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Thank you, counsel. Item 14 is a resolution. The City Council approves the selection of Grants Management LLC for professional consulting services for grants and grant management for RFQ number PS001-20 and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract of up to $2,000 per month, whether not to exceed $24,000 annually. Is that number right on there, Lisa 001-20?
Yes, that one's correct.
Okay. I was expecting a dash 21 on there.
It may be. I mean, I took that off the letter.
Okay. All right. Mayor, do you want to speak to that?
I can. Grants Management, that is Stacy McKean, who most of you have seen before you at some point in time. She does a great job for us, especially managing, you know, working with Jessica and managing these restore grants. She knows a lot of the federal regulations that we're up against, so just really have found her helpful in advisory capacity when we're dealing with these grants. So we appreciate her, her continued support of Fairhope in our grant process.
But we already have contracts with them to manage the Restore Act grants.
We, we do, but there are, we have weekly update, or monthly updates. These are continuing to be ongoing. She'll, she'll work through the bid process, make sure we meet the grants, talking about reporting. Also, we are going to have more money that we can apply for this coming year for, for Restore, so she will continue to earn her money.
No, I would think that this would be outside the scope of Restore Act then.
Well, she, yeah, you're, you're talking about she is already contracted with Restore, with the grant, with the Restore grants. Yes, she is. But this will be outside of the Restore grants. You're right. But she does continue to work with us on Restore, too.
Tap, yes. Yes. A trail. Tap, yeah, anything a DECA-related, any other, anything above and beyond Restore that we're currently working on.
Right. Yes.
And her consultancy is incredibly, incredibly helpful for us as a city. She keeps us out of quite a lot, and she gets us really great opportunities, so...
Now, my question is just whether or not it was outside the scope of the Restore, because I know we have, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars going to them for Restore Act management.
We have a lot going on right now.
All right, counsel, I entertain a motion to approve the selection.
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, here any non, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 15 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to procure one 57-kilowatt natural gas generator and one 100-kilowatt generator and one 100-kilowatt natural gas generator for lift stations for the sewer department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op Contract, which has been nationally bid and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total estimated combined cost will be $53,171. Can I get a motion to procure the two generators?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Jimmy, I was waiting for you to tell me if these were budgeted.
My, my computer's dead, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's a...
I believe they are.
It was budgeted for, I guess it's a, a bunch of them, it's a big number, like 550.
Yeah, it's just a partial.
It's a partial.
So that lift station improvement, though, that's not, that's not part of the Restore Act money, is it? Okay. Man, I just keep wishful thinking on that, don't I? All right, counsel, any more questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the procurement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 16 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure one Vactron Vacuum Evacuation System plus options including delivery for the gas department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Contract, which has been nationally bid and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost will be $74,954. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for the procurement. Corey, since Jimmy's computer died, is that budgeted? Nope, we got it's under again.
It's under.
Very good. Any questions, counsel? Okay, if not, I will entertain, I will ask all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item 17 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of Renourishment Beach Sand for the Magnolia Beach that was lost in Hurricane Sally for the Public Works Department. A request for quotes was sent to contractors as well as multiple state agencies for MBE and DBE consideration was posted on the city's website and in the public utilities building lobby. The city received three responses and awards the project to sand and clay ink for an estimated 1,500 dry tons of sand in the amount of $17,775. And Richard, I hate, we couldn't get through anything on the agenda meeting, so can I ask you, when you say the Magnolia Beach, what part of the beach are we talking about? South of the pier or down by the boat ramp?
This is, this is Magnolia Beach, starting at the Pier Avenue Boat Ramp. There's a little breakwater that goes out, then south down to the Pecan Avenue Pier. That's the, that, that semi-circular beach. This is the definition of insanity. We keep doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. We did pitch to FEMA for mitigation through the, the PA mitigation. That did not cut the mustard. We also pitched to the Hazard Mitigation Grant, and we did not get very far on the list there, but FEMA will reimburse us to put the sand back for the next storm to wash away again. So that's what we're doing.
Are you envisioning one day, are you envisioning something like they have at the Grand Hotel where you'd go?
Yeah, actually, Dr. Douglas did a proposal prior to my arriving here that had a permanent solution, and we have pitched it after Hurricane Nate, and we pitched it after Hurricane Sally for mitigation, and they keep saying, well, you replace that beach about seven more times, you'll probably qualify for the cost benefits analysis to, to get it mitigated. And that's, that's kind of the insanity of the system, but we, we play by the rules, so that's what we're doing, and, you know, and that kind of delayed this, this project a little bit because we were trying to work through all those options, and, but we do want to get it put back together before the summer.
And we're going to spread it ourselves?
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll, but we'll get force count reimbursement on our labor and equipment.
Now, incorrectly told the news, because he asked me about this sand today, and I wasn't sure, and I told him I didn't know if it was Zeta or Sally, but for clarification, it is Hurricane Sally.
For clarifications, it was Sally.
Make sure we get that on the record. Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the sand.
So moved.
We're motion in a second, and we'll, we will pay, we don't know, do we know what the number's going to be yet? Is it going to be 5% or 10%?
Twelve and a half is our match. We get eight, we get 75% from FEMA and 12 and a half percent from Alabama.
Okay. So Alabama didn't pick up the additional. Okay. So 12 and a half. All right, counsel. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 18 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure approximately 360 tons of a blend of Class II and III riprap for the emergency repair of 225 linear feet of bulkhead due to erosion at South Beach on Fairhope's waterfront for the Public Works Department, and the material is available for direct procurement through the South Alabama Purchasing Association, which has been nationally bid and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total not to exceed cost of $21,240. Now, was that due to Zeta or was that due to Sally? I'm assuming Zeta, because we're not putting it on the FEMA.
Well, it's, there was, there was subsequent failure due to both storms, but the, the facility was in disrepair before the hurricane, so we, that is what FEMA classifies as deferred maintenance, and since it was already identified in, in a Restore Grant, it is not eligible for any funding. And this is a, a temporary repair and stabilization until we get the Restore Project, which will put a permanent solution there, at least for service of life.
And I had the question asked earlier today, but I also couldn't answer this. It's just the seawall, does it, does it extend down to the beach portion there just south of the seawall? We're not putting anything?
No, 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 just, just where the failing bulkhead is, and it's, if you recall, as you come into South Beach, there's a, there's actually a joint in that bulkhead. It's basically from that joint point heading south, and then it ends before you get to the outfall pipes that then the beach is on the other side, on the south side.
I got that part right there.
Okay.
Also, when we do restore that, you're able to pull that rock back out.
And reuse it.
And reuse it.
Yes.
So it's not like we're just going to throw it away once it's done. You'll have the rock for future use.
Cool. Very good. All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the riprap.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 19 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope hereby rejects bid number 19-21 for Fairhope Dock's bulkhead repairs. That's the FEMA 4563 damaged by Hurricane Sally for the Public Works Department and authorizes staff to rebid due to not receiving any quotes. Well, if we reject them all that we receive, we're good, so I don't think any discussion's necessary. I'll entertain a motion to reject the bids.
That's, that's bid number 005-21. That's the one I told you about earlier.
It's what now?
Bid number 005-21.
Okay, I'm sorry. So bid number 005-21, not oh, 19-21. I got you. So 005-21 is the correct?
Correct.
Okay, when you wrote on here, you wrote 19-21. So did you, did you write the correct one or the, or the wrong one?
No, it's 005-21. I gave you a letter from DeeDee.
And wrote 19-21. I just want to make sure. You want to come look at it? Huh?
005-21.
Okay. All right. All right, so this is bid number 005-21, so I'll entertain a motion to reject all the bids.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 20 is a resolution, the City Council approves and adopts the recommendations for the Treasury Department restructuring and reclassification as follows. Reclassify the city accountant from grade 25S to staff accountant grade 24S and will report to the senior accountant, and that the compensation and job classification plan along with the grade order sheet be amended and approved to delete the assistant finance director position and the job description and grade of pay for the same. This is what we discussed in the last work session in detail. You want to briefly tell us, Kim?
Just briefly. Islyn Stone, we promoted to senior accountant after that came a vacant, and then she was in a position that was called city accountant as recommendation from Auburn, and we're changing the staff accountant, lowering it to a lower grade when I looked at some others around the county, what that grade should be. And then as me and Lisa are going through this, we noticed that there was a position that was called assistant finance director, and so that was cleaning that up to remove that position. So if you see on the organizational chart, those are the positions that is needed for the, under the Treasury Department.
And for clarification, too, we have included all this with the Auburn study, correct?
Yes, yes.
Before it was sent forward?
So the job description is not included, that we've submitted changes to the staff accountant position to Auburn, so we should get a clean copy back for that job description.
So the senior accountant at grade 26S remains the same? No change to that?
No change. When that position came vacant with Jill Cavanagh, it was called something different. We changed it to senior accountant, and Islyn Stone applied, and she is now in the senior accountant position. So now the, what was called city accountant is vacant. We, I would like to change that to say staff accountant and lower the grade.
Got you. I'm with you. Y'all have any questions for Kim? Okay.
Make a motion we approve as presented?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 21 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope hereby strongly opposes the proposed urban area designation criteria and urges the U.S. Census Bureau to reject the proposal. Sarah Sislak with the Eastern Shore MPO briefed us of the first item on tonight's work session. The resolution, she hit on all the bullets that are in this resolution. You can read the whole resolution there for yourself, but basically asking for no change to the, to the designated, designations, the current legislation that create, I guess, the Eastern Shore MPO, which is urbanization. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the letter, so pass this resolution in opposition, and also by doing so, we will be sending a letter to the U.S. Census Bureau to reject it.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay. I guess, you know, I don't know if I need to ask you to, to make that again, but I guess we would have the mayor designate the mayor to sign that letter of opposition. Can I just get you to amend that motion to, to have the, the letter sent, signed by the mayor? It's more proper to do that.
I'll make a motion to amend the resolution for the mayor to sign the letter to the Census Bureau.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the amended, amended motion. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. I should have caught that earlier and probably added that. Item 22 is an appointment to the Harbor Board. This would be for Mr. Robert Berry to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Bob Riggs, who has moved from Fairhope and has served admirably, pun intended there, for a term ending October 2021.
I see that.
Intertain a motion for this appointment, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. I will say that, you know, all of these, or most all of these members will be up for a reappointment in October 2021. We have a reappointment to the Parking Authority. We have Beth Fugard, Ginger Milligan, and Randy Williams nominated for a three-year term, which shall end March of 2024, and these are all reappointments. I'll ask for a motion for these reappointments.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Item 24 is reappointment to the Personnel Board, none other than Ms. Diane Thomas for a term, a five-year term ending December 2026. How does that, we're not at December 2021 yet. Is that?
Five years.
How's that work?
It's five years.
Was, are we, are we late on this? Would it be December 2025, maybe?
We're late on this.
Okay. I think that should be December 2025. All right, I'll entertain a motion for that reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 25, which was added to the agenda, I'll read this for the public, says be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that the City Council approves the selection of Sawgrass Consulting for professional consulting services for the new location of the Morph Pete Avenue Substation for the Electric Department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute the contract with a not to exceed limit of $33,410, subject to approval of the city attorney, and I believe the attorney had redlined, redlined their agreement. I don't think it was anything too big, but just wanted to make sure that they agree to those changes before the mayor signs that. So this is for the new location of the substation, which gets it out of the hole in the ground and puts it on some relatively flat land that the city purchased last week.
Saves us a lot of headache.
A lot of headache and a lot of money, and saves us a lot of potential liability as well. I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection.
So moved.